I know, I got it. I know. I'm live, I'm not sure that's live yet. I'm live, I need to talk.
Ms. Dearing is on.
Playing on a sentence.
Want to go home?
Ms. Dearing is off. Oh. The Woodman and Mr. Merricks is on.
Okay.
Just on pretty thick of an A.
Is everybody else still on the phone? Yes, I am.
I'm just getting attention. I guess I need to do that. I was going to go there. I probably hear. I probably hear and I got the. They're doing a public hearing.
Well, we see something about. About things.
Pretty much all of them.
It's live. Now it's on.
He didn't win.
We're battling now.
Don't touch. Don't touch anything.
That's what I hate about having to be on social network.
We're good to go. All right, ladies and gentlemen, sorry for the delay. We'll call the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for Monday, August the 8th to order. If we can help roll call.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Brumfield.
Here.
Ms. Dearing. Mr. Craddock.
Here.
Mr. Merricks.
Yeah.
Mr. Gaiman. Mr. Easley.
Here.
If you all would please rise and join me in a moment of silence for the proceedings of this meeting and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with no end, just one.
Board members, you have before you the agenda for the meeting. Do I hear or do we need to make any adjustments or additions or deletions to it? If not, I don't attain a positive motion.
I may be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, thank you. You also have in your packet the minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting of July the 11th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? I don't attain a motion to approve them as written. Have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please vote yes. Thank you. Ms. Ragsdale, any old business?
I do not have any old business.
Okay. Any new business?
Um, new business next month. Um, you will have four cases. Um, a special use permit request um for a school, a special use permit request for the sale service and repair of automobiles, um, a special use request for a public garage, and a special use request for um ATV trail expansion at Elkhorn Lake. Um, and we'll be sent, we'll send a list of those to you um tomorrow, so you'll know where they are.
Thank you. Should be a good one. I do not have a chairman's report.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
Yes.
Um, just so the board is aware, we are in the process of updating our zoning ordinance. Um, the county has hired the Berkeley Group to undertake this for us. Um, we are in the very beginning phases of this, um, so we will be having a public input meeting on August 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Community Center in Chatham. Um, so if you all would like to attend or would like to pass the word along, so anyone else um you know that may be interested in providing input can attend, um, we would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. August the 18th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM here.
At the Community Center.
At the Community Center, Dennis Street. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will proceed to the hearing, to the cases tonight. I gotta speak here. I gotta read the precepts, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Board of Zoning Appeals, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications and appeals in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, a comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board other than the applicant regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. We will open the public hearing on case S dash 22 dash 014, Joshua and Amy Jennings. Report.
Case S dash 22 dash 014, Joshua and Amy Jennings have petitioned for a special use permit on 9.83 acres located on State Road 58, Martinsville Highway, in the Tunstall Election District for an indoor gun range. On July 5th, 2022, the planning commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with the conditions submitted by staff. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman Joshua Jennings is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Board.
Good afternoon.
I respectfully request permission to get the special use permit so that I can augment our current retail facility. In other words, we're going to move into this new facility that we're going to build with the range built to the DOE expectations. It'll allow us to expand our business and offer a great service to the community. Uh, there will be no appreciable changes to the environment because it's all going to be contained. Uh, not only does the community require quiet operation, but we will as well for just retail experience and things like that. Uh, and if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jennings? Your current retail business that you'll be moving in, what is moving into this?
Uh, it's about three miles up the road. It actually has a cascade zip code. Uh, it's currently located on 13728 Martinsville Highway. Uh, if you head toward Martinsville, about three miles, that's the location that you're you're looking at, is 10 acres, which roughly, uh, that was bought last year and the, with the intent of expanding into that location so that we can have a greater retail footprint and offer this service that currently we cannot offer.
And and what is your current retail?
It's guns gear and ammo.
Pardon me?
Guns gear and ammo.
Okay, thank you. Very good, all right. Any questions from the board? Okay, may have a few more after we discuss a little bit. Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up. Is there anyone from the public other than than the applicant that would like to address the board? Okay, then we will close the hearing at 6:14 PM. Comments?
I don't see a problem with it all. He's familiar with the conditions, I guess, that the staff's recommended.
I'm wondering if if we if we decide we want to go, excuse me, with, excuse me, with a with a positive motion, that we include Mr. Jennings' uh directions or or what he has, I guess you'd call it a proffer, that he, that in his letter, that he said it would be an indoor range that would follow federal requirements uh for the Department of Energy and the Department of Defense, as as well as NRA and NSF. Don't know if we need that, if we if we go with what the staff has recommended. Okay, all right. Come come back up if you will, sir.
When I was putting together the proposal, most of those documents overlap. The easiest to understand was the DOE because it was a 68-page document versus a 200 or 300-page one. Um, the DoD has more problems with ordinance that we would never encounter in their manual.
Thank you.
Uh, the DOE specifically handled mostly pistol caliber, rifle caliber, and then some of the larger ones uh that we're probably not going to see in our location. Uh, I don't, the the expense of setting it up for like 50 BMG is going to be beyond what I'm really wanting to do. Uh, short answer.
Any other questions for Mr. Jennings? Okay. Is the board leaning toward a positive motion?
Yes.
Okay. I will read a positive motion with the staff recommendation, and then we'll see how that goes. Whereas Joshua and Amy Jennings have petitioned the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit for an indoor gun range, and whereas we find no substantial detriment to adjacent property, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Whereas there will be no significant adverse effects upon adjacent property that cannot be mitigated through conditions, I move the special use permit be granted with the following conditions. All shooting lanes must be contained within an enclosed structure. Lanes must be constructed to contain bullets within its walls, ceiling, and floor, and must be properly vented. The facility must meet Department of Energy standards and uniform statewide building code requirements where applicable. That's the positive motion. Do I hear somebody that wouldn't make that motion? Okay, Mr. Brumfield makes a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Yeah, we got a couple. All right, we got a motion and a second for a positive motion with the conditions as presented. All those in favor, please make it known by voting yes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you. The time is 6:18. We'll open case S dash 22 dash 015. Ms. Ragsdale?
Case S dash 22 dash 015, Bradley Boswell has petitioned for a special use permit on one acre located on Highway 40 East Gretna Road in the Callens Gretna Election District for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. On July 5th, 2022, the planning commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Bradley Boswell is here to represent the petition.
Okay. Are you? All right, Mr. Boswell, do you have anything you'd like to add to your application petition?
I don't think so. Sorry.
Board have any questions for Mr. Boswell? All right, may have some questions for you after we discuss it a little bit. Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak, is anyone from public that would like to address the board? All right, then we'll close the public hearing at 6:20 PM. Comments?
I wrote out and looked at the site. I mean, it's four other single wides wrapped there in the area, so it looks like it would be consistent with the area there.
All right, so we lean in toward a positive motion?
Yes.
I'll read a positive motion, we'll see how it goes. Whereas Bradley Boswell has petitioned the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit for the placement of a double-wide mobile home, and whereas we find no substantial detriment to adjacent property, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, I move the special use permit be granted.
Make a motion.
Mr. Brumfield, lay the motion.
Second.
Mr. Stone, second. All in favor of a positive motion, please make it known. Thank you, sir, for coming out. Good luck to you. All right, the time is 6:21. We'll open the case S dash 22 dash 016, Pennsylvania CSG LLC. Your report, Ms. Ragsdale?
Case S dash 22 dash 016, Pennsylvania Pennsylvania CSG LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 52.01 acres located off State Road 724 Mill Creek Road in the Banister Election District for a utility-scale solar energy facility. On July 5th, 2022, the planning commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with conditions submitted by staff, and the addition of condition number 20 showed in your staff report.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Anyone here to represent this?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Kieran Seale. I'm the Director of Development with Dominion Energy. Uh, as Emily mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk about our Pennsylvania CSG LLC project, which is a community solar project we're proposing to develop on Mill Creek Road. Emily, we provided a presentation, is there a way to advocate to that?
Sir, could you raise your mic up?
Yes, absolutely. Can you hear me better now?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks so much. So here's just a quick overview of our presentation. I'm happy to give an overview of who we are, Dominion Energy, what we do. Um, I know this board may have seen many of the prior projects, which were true utility-scale projects. I believe this may be the first shared solar project this board has seen, so I'm happy to explain the difference between community solar and utility-scale solar, uh, how they differ, uh, with regard to land use, and and who benefits from these types of projects. Uh, then I'll give an overview of our particular project site, uh, and our path to get here today, and I'm happy to take any questions. So this is just an overview of our company. I won't spend too much time here. Uh, as I mentioned, Dominion Energy is a community solar developer. We're headquartered out of Atlanta. We solely develop community-scale projects. We don't work on any uh true utility-scale projects. Uh, we're a full-term key developer, which means we not only develop the projects, move them through interconnection and permitting, but also actually build and operate the project for the long term. Uh, we think that's a great advantage to the communities we work in, uh, so you know who is developing the project from day one to the final day. Uh, it also allows us to maintain kind of one channel of communication with the community. Uh, we come from a deep bench of talent. Uh, since 2014, our board and our executive team have developed around a gigawatt of projects. We currently have around 1,000 megawatts of projects in our portfolio today, uh, not only in Virginia, but in every major community solar market across the country, California, New York, Maine, uh, Wisconsin. Uh, and over the next four years, uh, we anticipate, uh, developing, constructing, and operating around 750 megawatts of projects. So the first question I always get, um, at hearings like these is, what is community solar? How is it different than projects we've seen in the past, and why is it happening in Virginia now? Uh, and the answer to that is the shared solar law, which was a piece of legislation that passed in 2020. Uh, and it did two things. It created a new class of solar project, shared solar, which is different from both residential, rooftop PV, and true utility scale. Uh, and it's defined as being no larger than 5 megawatts AC, which is around 25 acres of land. Uh, and under this program, all of the projects in aggregate cannot be more than 200 megawatts AC. So each individual project is relatively small, 5 megawatts, and all the projects in aggregate for the program relatively small, 200 megawatts. More importantly, what it does is it creates a marketplace where Dominion customers can subscribe to community solar projects to save money monthly on their electric bill. Uh, the way I like to describe this is to compare to residential rooftop solar, because that's something that folks are more familiar with, maybe some of you have panels on your roof, or maybe you have a neighbor or family member who do. Um, and when you see a situation like that, it's very unlikely that that resident, uh, went out and bought those panels themselves and installed them on the roof, uh, because the initial cost of acquiring the panels and constructing them is very expensive. More likely what they've done is they've worked with a residential solar developer uh and entered into a power purchase agreement. Essentially what that means is the developer puts their panels on your roof, uh, that they install at no cost, and they continue to maintain over the lifetime of the system. And they sell that resident back power month over month, and they, uh, charge for that electricity at a rate that is less than what that resident would otherwise pay Dominion. So it essentially eliminates, uh, the power they get from Dominion, uh, and instead they receive power from their panels, but are saving money on their electric bill. Shared solar fundamentally commercially acts in a similar way. If you could picture an entire neighborhood where every house has solar panels on their roof, uh, and then you take each of those off and centralize them into one system, that's effectively a shared solar project. Uh, electrically, the power goes to Dominion's grid, but similarly, the offtake from that project is used by individual residential customers who can subscribe to receive a share of the credit produced by that solar farm month over month, uh, to save money on their electric bill. We think, uh, this provides a lot of advantages over traditional rooftop PV, because it allows us to reach a wider group of people, uh, than who otherwise may be able to receive the benefit from just rooftop PV. There are a lot of limitations to traditional rooftop PV. Uh, for example, you typically have to have access to your roof, which means you need to own your home. Uh, you need to live in a single-family home as opposed to, uh, an apartment building. So that, right off the bat, you know, prohibits a lot of people from from receiving this benefit and saving money on their electric bill. Um, there are locational issues. Maybe you have a tree that's in your yard and, uh, provides shade on your roof, but you like the tree, you don't want to cut it down. That would prohibit you from getting solar panels on your roof, or perhaps your roof is just at an age where, uh, you would need to replace it sometime over the lifespan of the system, and that's not convenient to you. With community solar, none of this matters because the panels aren't actually on your roof, uh, and anyone who is a Dominion customer can subscribe to participate in this and receive that benefit month over month virtually. Finally, one thing I wanted to highlight is, as part of this program, uh, the state is encouraging, uh, low and medium income offtake, so, uh, you know, finding customers who, you know, could really benefit from this program, and that's something that we, uh, you know, really take to heart and something that we're really trying to encourage as part of our development of our projects. For those rooftop PV projects, the other thing I didn't mention is that those types of developers often require a minimum credit score because they're putting their capital on your roof. And we don't think that's very fair. We think those folks who, uh, may be of a lower income, who could, you know, most greatly benefit from this type of project and this type of program should be able to participate. So that's another advantage of community solar. Second question I guess, do we even have Dominion customers here? I know Pennsylvania County has a lot of electrical co-ops, um, so this is a question. We receive throughout our informational meetings as we're being with the community and with staff. Uh, the answer is yes, there are. Um, there are approximately 5,000 Dominion customer households in the county. Uh, in this map, you can see the map of the county, the electoral districts, and that blue polygon in the middle, uh, represents Dominion's utility territory. So it runs kind of right down the middle of the county, uh, kind of along that, uh, Highway 29 corridor, uh, and it touches around 5,000 homes, it represents around 20% of total households, uh, within the county. So we think this is a great benefit to provide this advantage to a lot of people, uh, from all parts of the county. And again, how is community solar different than true utility-scale solar? Um, as I mentioned, with utility, uh, community solar within the program, the maximum system size is 5 megawatts AC. That's around 25 acres of land. Uh, the project that we're talking about today is even a little bit smaller than that. Uh, comparing that to true utility-scale projects, uh, there's a big difference both in capacity and land use. So I know, you know, some of the projects that have come through here in the past, the true utility-scale projects, they're, you know, 20, 80, 100-plus megawatts of capacity. Uh, that's, those are big projects. They take up a lot of land. Uh, they're more difficult to cite, they're more difficult to design properly, um, they, you know, have a tendency to fragment, uh, communities and impact natural resources. With community solar, we avoid all of this because our footprint is smaller, and that allows us to be a lot more nimble in nuance in how we cite projects and how we design them, uh, to make sure that they're integrated well with the character of the community, avoid, uh, environmental resources, and can be properly screened. Uh, and then finally, the biggest difference, I think, between the two types of projects, utility-scale projects, obviously those, the power from those types of projects are sold directly to Dominion, no different than a natural gas plant or a coal plant, or their customers are large commercial customers like data centers, warehouses. Or their customers are large commercial customers like data centers, warehouses. We really think there's an advantage to these types of projects that are small, out of the way, and where the offtake is individual residential customers who could directly benefit from the projects and their communities. So we're really excited about this program. So as I mentioned, the project that we're talking about today is our Pennsylvania CSG LLC project. It's located at 637 Mill Creek Road. This is a 50-acre property, currently agricultural in use. And our project that we're proposing is 4.9 megawatts DC, 3.75 megawatts AC. So as I mentioned, the maximum capacity in this program is five. We're slightly smaller than that. And with a smaller capacity comes a smaller footprint. So while the entire property is around 50 acres in size, our area under footprint is only around 14 acres. So that allows us to be really nuanced, tuck our project away from the parcel boundaries. There are lots of things that we like about this thing. I'll share a photo of our layout on the next page. I believe all of you should have a copy of our design in the packets. The layout and the parcel is kind of irregularly shaped. It's very elongated, but it's set far back off the road with proportionally kind of narrow frontage. And we think that's a great advantage. This kind of quirky shape really helps for our design, because it allows us to set the project far back off the road, where it'll be out of people's way and out of view. As you can see from this table, when we designed the project, we wanted to make sure we were not only compliant, but exceeding the county's requirements for setbacks. So as all of you know, the way the solar law is written, the minimum setback includes 150 feet, but it should be 200 feet if the neighboring property is residential in use. Now, we have many different types of neighbors. It's in a relatively low-density residential area. Some of our neighbors are kind of commercial in nature. We said, let's just make it simple, so we made our setback from all parcel boundaries 200 feet. So we are compliant, we meet that setback requirement, but in many areas, we largely exceed it. As we'll see on the next page, that setback from Mill Creek Road to our first panel is really more like 500, maybe even 600 feet. So it allows us to really set our project back. The site is a mix of cleared field and existing tree stand. We think this is a great benefit. It allows us to focus the majority of our project as much as we could in the previously cleared areas, while still being able to utilize a lot of that existing vegetation, mature tree stand to screen our project from view from the neighboring properties. Where we need, we'll enhance that existing buffer with proposed new buffer in compliance with the county code, 100 feet thick, a mix of both conifer and hardwood trees to provide year-round screening with also some visual diversity. So we think this is a great project. Another thing I'll mention, in looking at the comprehensive plan for the county, this property, the future land use is categorized as industrial, but the properties immediately below it are listed as residential. So we're in kind of this cusp transitional area. And in areas like this, where you're going to have, the way the county intended, some future industrial use and some future residential use, we think projects like these are good transitional use, because it is relatively commercial in nature, but it's one that is compatible with agricultural use, is a passive use of the land with very low and limited earth disturbance and very quiet once it's built. So we think this is a very compatible use for this area of the county. I just want to highlight the path we took to get here. There were actually a couple steps in our process. When we started this project, the site was double-zoned, which was kind of an administrative error from a lot consolidation. So it was double-zoned both R1 residential and A1 agricultural. So before we could even get to the step for special use permit, we had to go through rezoning. So we started this process back in January. And right off the bat, we met with Emily, we met with Baden, and we talked about, how can we put our best foot forward here, both for the rezoning and the special use permit? And above and beyond, the response we got was go out to the community, talk to the neighbors, get their feedback. So throughout this process, we've held a number of community outreach events, both by Zoom and in person, community meetings to answer questions, receive feedback about our project, and we've received a lot of great feedback, a lot of great comments. So from March through June, you could see kind of the path we took here, met with a lot of great neighbors. I'm really thrilled to say that along the way, we garnered a lot of support with the neighbors, where through our rezoning process, we received a letter of support from one of our neighbors, Billy Fitzgerald, who lives close to the project, kind of with the support of many of his neighbors who attended that meeting. So they jointly provided that letter of support. Similarly, at one of our informational meetings, we met Anita Royston. Anita Royston is the chapter president of the county chapter of the NPLACP. She was thrilled to hear about our project, invited us back to speak with her executive committee. Lots of great feedback there. So throughout this process, lots of coordination with the neighbors, lots of great feedback. Through our rezoning process, I'm excited to say that we had unanimous support from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors in our rezoning, where we provided full information about our intentions for the property, and then also last month, unanimous vote of support from our Planning Commission. So a lot of great feedback that was integrated into our project, and we're really happy with it. So keep moving quickly here. So this is just an overview of our layout. As I mentioned, you can see how the parcel's kind of configured. Mill Creek Road runs along that southernmost boundary of the property, so you can see a lot of it is setback off the road, which is where we have focused our array. That dark gray on the western and southern sides are existing mature vegetation that will stay in place, and the hatched area surrounding the array is new vegetation that will supplement to make sure the project is effectively screened. And this is just a photo that we put together to give an idea of what this might look like. You can see here the areas of the site that's already cleared. In the middle of our property, the property is bisected by MVP, which is already in the ground. Our project is kind of located on both sides of it. We've had a lot of great coordination with the pipeline developer to date, you know, micro-sizing and designing our project in a way that makes sense for everyone. So this is the existing condition today. This is our project once the array is put in place, but before vegetative screening is put in place. Now, we know, based on the way the county's ordinance was written, that vegetative screening and construction will be phased in a way to minimize visual impacts. It's more likely that the screen will be up before the panels are in place, but we wanted to show this, to show worst-case scenario. So you can see here, these are located hundreds of feet away from the property, away in the distance. And then finally, this is what it'll look like once our landscaping is in place. Again, it'll be a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees to provide visual interest along the road. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight the economic benefit for the project. First, of course, as we discussed, is the opportunities for local subscribership, where residents can learn more about our project or our construction, elect to sign up and save money on their electric bill month over month. We've had lots of conversations with county staff about this process, happy as we move through to kind of work with the Board of Supervisors, the community groups, churches, PTAs, housing authorities, to get the word out about these projects, so residents of the county can be aware when it's time to sign up and when they can save money. The second is a revenue share agreement. I know this board is very familiar with signing agreements for the large utility-scale projects. Our projects, based on the way the regulations are written, are not large enough of a capacity to enter into signing agreements. However, we can enter into revenue share, which operates much in the same way, providing tax receivables to the county year over year. This is something that we've spoke about with county staff, we're supportive of this condition. So what we're proposing is $1,400 per megawatt AC with a 2% escalator over the lifespan of the system. That results in around $250,000 of revenue to the county. And we think this makes a lot of sense, because this is revenue that's received above and beyond the existing ag use of the property, but it's for a use that creates no strain in cost and county services. Of course, more traditional forms of commercial and industrial development bring in tax revenue, but they also come at a cost. There's more traffic, there's more wear and tear on the highways, new school age children, trash pickup. Because solar is a low-intensity land use, because it's a passive land use, we view this as a great benefit to the county to provide additional tax receivables for a project that, once it's constructed, will sit there quietly and well-screened for the next number of years. So with that, that's an overview of our project. I'm happy to answer any questions this board may have. Thank you very much.
I guess the first question that comes to mind for me is if I want to sign up for it?
Sure.
And it has nothing really to do with zoning. It's just a question of...
Of course.
What do I save? What does it cost? How does it work?
Sure. So as we move towards construction, we have a community engagement team who's responsible for community engagement and offtake. So as I mentioned, we're happy to work with the county to get the word out as we're moving towards that subscription process. As I mentioned, that could be anything from working with community groups, putting ads in local papers, holding informational sessions, sending out mailers. So that way, people are aware this is coming, and they can have the first ad bat to be able to subscribe. With regards to the actual savings, it depends on the credited portion of the electrical bill, but typically, we say it's around a 10% savings month over month. Other benefits are very flexible terms. It costs nothing to actually join and sign up. It costs nothing to terminate your subscriber agreement. And if you move, the typical term of community solar subscriber agreement is 25 years. But over the term of the program, you can move and maintain your agreement and your savings, as long as you're moving to another place that is also within Dominion's utility service territory.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we may have some.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public signed up to speak?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone from the public that would like to address the board other than the applicant? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 6:42. In your packet, the staff and the Planning Commission has presented 20 conditions that if we go with a positive motion, that they would recommend that we make a positive motion and include the 20 conditions. We've been using 19 in the past, but with the new community-type setup, they're requesting or suggesting a 20th one to be included.
I think it's a great location. It's really not near a residential. I like that.
Right.
Off the road. I think they've done a great job.
And the way the land lays, I think it's going to be about as invisible as you can make one.
I think it's great. My only comment about this project, others that have been approved in the county, is I'm riding through, and I know it's the way that the ordinance is currently written, but sometime, what I feel, what I'd like to see, is that the landscaping and the trees, et cetera, that are planted, that that be started at the start of the projects. What I'm seeing as I ride through the county now, all of it's done at the very end. And at some point in time, that's what I would like to see, is that we start requiring the landscaping as soon as the project's construction phase starts. That's when those trees and things like that should be planted. We have projects that's been going on for two years, and there's no landscaping yet. And that's the only comment. I'm not saying it needs to take place, but sometime, I think we need to consider that.
And I wondered on that thought, if it's feasible to plant $10,000 of trees around our ongoing work site? And you make a good point, that you're two years behind on the growth.
Yeah. So I think that's something we need to consider at some point.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, we do require, one of the conditions is a viewshed protection plan, and that is something that staff looks for in the viewshed protection plan. Are there certain areas that won't be impacted by construction that plannings could go up prior to the completion of construction? So we do look at that in this plan that has been recently added to the conditions, to your point.
So it's included in here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So is the board of the opinion that we want to read a positive motion with the 20 conditions presented by the staff and Planning Commission? All right, y'all, sit back while I read this, and I'll read all the conditions as we get. Let me get my wording right here. Whereas Pennsylvania CSG LLC has petitioned the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit for a utility-scale solar energy facility, and whereas we find no substantial detriment to adjacent property, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, and whereas there are no significant adverse effects upon adjacent property that cannot be mitigated through conditions, I move the special use permit be granted with the following conditions. Excuse me. Site development plan, location. All solar panels and other above-ground equipment will be located within the project area shown on the conceptual site plan included with the special use permit application. All site plan requirements of Section 35-141 must be met before permits are issued. Height. Except for the collection yard and substation, or otherwise as required by applicable building code, the maximum height for the solar panels and other above-ground equipment will be 15 feet. Setbacks. Except for fencing and any pole-mounted electronic lines consistent with the county ordinance, all above-ground equipment shall meet the setback requirement set forth in Section 35-141D. No setbacks are required between the parcel lines, parcel lines, or parcels that are part of a single project. No setbacks are required between the parcel lines or parcels that are part of a single project. Fencing. Fencing for the project will be standard chain length and at least six feet high. The applicant shall maintain the fence for the life of the project. Landscaping. The applicant will comply with Section 35-121 fencing screening. At the perimeter locations, the setback will include a minimum 100-foot-wide landscaped area comprised of any existing vegetation supplemented as needed with a staggered row of planted trees and large shrubs. All rows of planted vegetation shall be evergreen plantings or varieties native or adaptable to the region, with one row consisting of a variety expected to reach a minimum height of 25 feet, and the remaining rows of varieties designed to reach at least 15 feet at height that matured. All evergreens shall be a minimum of six feet in height at time of planting. Existing vegetation shall be maintained and supplemented with new plantings as needed to maintain required screening. Prior to construction and site plan approval, a landscaping maintenance plan will be submitted to the zoning administrator for approval, which shall provide for the posting of a bond or other surety in an amount sufficient to ensure that the plantings are sufficiently established and the landscaping is maintained or replaced during the life of the project. Landscape renderings or simulations shall be sealed by a registered landscape architect. Construction management and mitigation. Prior to construction, the applicant shall prepare and submit to the zoning administrator a construction management plan to address traffic control methods, site access, fencing, lighting, mitigation of construction operations, and hours of construction activity. Viewshed protection. A viewshed protection plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Director of Community Development prior to the issuance of permits, identifying appropriate measures that will be taken to protect the viewsheds surrounding the project during construction. Road repairs. All public and private roads must remain open during construction. Any damage to roads caused by construction will be promptly repaired to pre-construction conditions and/or be denied standards where deemed necessary. Erosion and sediment control. Prior to construction and approved erosion and sediment control plan will be implemented for the entire project, and an erosion and sediment control bond will be provided. Stormwater management. Prior to construction, a Virginia stormwater management program permit from the Virginia DEQ will be obtained for the project, including an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan. Operational noise and electrical interference. The project will comply with all applicable counterrequirements for noise and shall not generate or create electrical interruptions or interference. and shall not generate or create electrical interruptions or interference with existing electrical or electronic uses. Operational light. Fixed lighting at the perimeter of the project will be limited to gates and will be shielded downward facing to minimize light spillage and shall be motion activated. Compliance. The project shall be designed, constructed, and tested to meet all applicable local, state, and federal standards. Decommissioning. In accordance with section 35-141E, the applicant shall completely decommission the facility within 12 months if the facility ceases to generate electricity for a continuous period of 12 months, including all solar collectors, cabling, electrical components, fencing, and any other associated equipment, facilities, and structures. Prior to construction and approval of the entire site plan, a decommissioning plan will be submitted to the zoning administrator, which shall provide for the posting of a bond or other surety acceptable to the county in the amount of the decommissioning cost, not including salvage value for the project. Start of construction. This special use permit will expire upon construction of the entire project. Excuse me. The special use permit will expire unless construction of the entire project is commenced within three years of the date of issuance of the special use permit. Survival. As long as the project is operated in conformance with these conditions, the special use permit shall continue for the life of the project. Comply with all DEQ regulations regarding non-point source pollutants. Chemical sprays used in weed control shall comply with DEQ regulations. Fire and rescue training. The applicant shall provide annual training to the local fire department regarding battery storage. Ordinance compliance. The project shall remain in compliance with all other applicable requirements of the Pittsland County Code 35-141D, 35-141E, and 35-141F, and that's specifically stated in the conditions of this special use permit. Revenue share. The applicant, and if, and if different than the applicant, the facility owner and/or operator shall provide annual cash payments in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code 51.1-2636. The amount of such annual cash payment shall be equal to $1,400 per megawatt as measured in alternating current generation capacity of the nameplate capacity of the facility based on submissions by the applicant. And if different than the applicant, the facility owner and/or operator to the interconnecting utility within a 2% annual compounding escalator. Beginning on January the 1st, 2026, the applicant and the county acknowledge and agree that the county may identify in futures budget, in future budget years, qualifying public improvements that may be funded by the annual cash payments to be provided by the facility owner and/or operator. The first payment will be due owner before the date, that is 90 days following the commencement of commercial operation of the community solar facility. Subsequent payments will be due on each anniversary of the commercial operation date until the earlier of the 35th anniversary of the commercial operation site, with final payment being made on such anniversary or the commencement of decommissioning the community solar facility. The applicant, facility owner, and/or operator shall provide written notice of the Director of Community, to the Director of Community Development, within 10 business days of when the community solar facility commences commercial operation. The payment by the applicant, facility owner, and/or operator of all annual cash payments shall be a condition of this permit. The permit holder and/or owner shall be jointly and severally responsible for the payment of all annual cash payments required by this condition. I would ask the applicant, are these conditions something that the applicant could live with if we make a positive motion?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've read the positive motion with the 20 conditions. Do I have a positive motion?
I moved it.
Say it. Mr. Merrick and Mr. Stone both made a positive motion. Motion and a second. All those in favor will make it known by voting yes. All right, thank you all. Good luck to you. Thank you for coming out. It's only 19 left. That's a good idea. All right, the time is 6:56. We will open the public hearing of case S-22-017 Dry Fork Solar One LLC. Ms. Ragville?
Case S-22-017 Dry Fork Solar One LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 47.36 acres located on US Highway 29 in the Chatham Blair's election district for a utility scale solar energy facility. On July 5th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with the conditions submitted by staff. The staff, some reason, closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Dry Fork Solar One LLC is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, welcome to the board. Thanks for seeing us tonight as well. I know that the gentleman from Dimension gave you a really good overview of what projects of this type are like. So I'll just begin by introducing myself and then kind of get into some of the things that differ this project from the one you just heard about. My name's Claire Havel. I'm the project developer for Dry Fork Solar. I live up in Richmond, Virginia, working with New Leaf Energy. That's a new name on, on the, on the docket for us. We are previously known as Borrego, and I'll kind of tell you about that transition in a moment. I'm here with my colleague.
Andrew Kavanaugh, civil engineer with Borrego, well, sorry, New Leaf Energy.
What I wanted to get into just before we dive into some of the details of our project and then our company change, just a quick overview of what I wanted to cover this evening. Tell you who we are. I'll be light on the community solar in Virginia. Tell you a bit about the project, where it's located, who owns that parcel. Andrew will tell you about the landscaping plan, how we've revised this plan time and time again to get it just right. The decommissioning plan that we have in place. And then I'll tell you a little bit about the community outreach that I've done and the feedback I received from community members. Not spend too much time on the, on the history here. But as we mentioned, the company that we originally applied for the special use permit is called Borrego Energy. And you can see that Borrego's been around for a really long time. They started back in 1980. Three brothers started the company. It's been family owned as it's existed over the course of many, many years. That company has taken, taken on new elements. So you've seen that they started as a development company. Then they started doing the procurement and construction of projects. They even did a little bit of the operating and maintenance of these projects, the ownership and maintenance of these projects. But throughout the whole time, the development portion, the business that we're getting into this evening, really took off. And so because of the success of that development portion, they decided to become their standalone development business. Then regot a new name, New Leaf Energy. Same team, same application. The only thing that's changing is our business cards with a new email address. But I wanted to give you a little overview in case you're wondering, who are these new kids, these new leaves on the block? Here's just the community solar light version for you tonight. The gentleman from Dimension did a great job of explaining the ins and outs of that program, so I won't berate the point any further. I just wanted to show this chart just to sort of illustrate for you the many different ways that we can do solar in Virginia. And community solar is one of the elements to this that will make it a really successful, clean energy motion in Virginia. There is a limit on the number of megawatts this program can withstand, so we don't expect to see it take over entirely. But we do know that these great sites are worth pursuing to reach that cap, that 200-megawatt cap. Some of the benefits that have been touched on already, I want to just call out some of my favorites. No increased traffic, or because these are smaller projects. It creates local grid reliability. One difference that I'm not sure has been pointed out yet, these smaller projects actually connect to three-phase distribution lines and not those big transmission lines. So it sort of keeps that infrastructure on the more local level, so it increases that local grid reliability. And of course, we don't use any fertilizers. We plant native pollinator mixes, so it really helps the ecology of the land underneath. And it keeps that land out of commission for the farming for a while to kind of get that nutrient level back up to something that will be highly productive once this project's done and over with. This is just a couple of photos to show you the scale of what we're talking about. Up close of the, the panel itself, in case you've never seen one. And then the, the size of that project as well. If you're wondering what that 25 acres kind of looks like, that's a good aerial view to show you what we're talking about this evening. So a little bit about this project, Dry Fork Solar. Where is it located? Right off of US 29. If you're familiar where the co-part is located, we're right next door to that. You can kind of see where it is located inside of the county and then right there off of US 29. You'll notice it's set quite far back from US 29, and we'll kind of get into that as well. So why this parcel? I mentioned those three-phase distribution lines for these small-scale projects. Located right on site, that makes this a prime opportunity and a great parcel for a project. It is in Dominion territory, so it's eligible for that shared solar program. It was already zoned A1, so it's in compliance with the ordinance already. We were able to avoid wetlands on site because of the 43 acres. It's a little roomy in there. The abutting parcels are primarily commercial, so of course co-part, and then undeveloped residential properties. Not a lot of neighbors around, and I'll kind of touch on that as well. It's located very far from the road. We'll get into that view shed component that I know is of interest in a moment. And the interested landowner and family, that's what makes any parcel a great parcel to pursue solar on. The family in question's Owen, the Owen family. Owen Farms LLC is the president, is Melvin Owen Senior, a wonderful gentleman. I think a pretty strong pillar in this community, and his family has had this tobacco farm business for quite some time. Even though they want to diversify their income by leasing their land for solar here, they do own other properties around the area and they want to continue farming. They just want to diversify some of the income that they'll get over the years as Melvin Owen Senior reaches retirement. He wants to slow down as best as he can and create a little passive income for himself and his descendants. Regarding the comprehensive plan, again, this is currently zoned A1, which is permissible for a special use permit. The comprehensive plan indicates future use here is medium to high residential in the lighter areas and then commercial in those darker areas. I wanted to point out to you, the location of this solar facility is surrounded entirely by trees currently, and we have a really robust landscaping plan in place that Andrew will get into for you to consider as well. I also wanted to mention that Cohen Resnick did a study to answer the question of, hey, is this going to affect my property value? The answer is no. And I can get you a copy of that report if you'd like to see it in further detail. The US 29 corridor that indicates commercial use shouldn't be affected by this proposed solar facility either. You'll notice there, it's a flagstaff frontage that leads back to the parcel. It's a very thin portion of the parcel that's located right off of 29. It's just the access road. So we don't believe that this is going to impede on any kind of commercial development plans there. There's not a lot of it for this parcel located in that area of the comprehensive plan. I'll pass it over to Andrew to get a little bit into the details of the project for your consideration.
Thank you, Claire. Good evening, board. Andrew Kavanaugh, civil engineer with New Leaf Energy. Presented before you this evening is the layout plan as submitted to the county. The lot, or the developable area is 25 acre, approximately 25 acres in size. It's going to be planned to be on site for 35 to 40 years. Initial lease option is 20 years with option to extended five-year increments. We've made a lot of, as Claire's mentioned, we've made a lot of revisions to this project as well. It's gone through a few iterations. And at its basic form, we've gone back to the books, gone by the books, and this is to a T to follow the county's ordinance. So that includes the 150-foot setbacks, 100-foot vegetative buffer. We've also provided supplemental buffering where the existing vegetation on site and existing tree stands do not meet the 100-foot requirement. It's actually a perfect site for, for solar development. It is setback 1,200 linear feet from US 29. There's already an existing frontage of vegetative screening there. And we've also provided supplemental screening with that 100-foot buffer back closer to, to the site. As Claire mentioned, we are not disturbing any wetlands or any flood zones, RPAs, so on and so forth. This is a tracking system, so we have up to 15% tolerances for grade, which means that we don't actually have to grade this site. So it's minimal land disturbance. The site itself conforms to the land and not the other way around. There's no real manipulation here. About four acres of tree clearing, which I'll kind of touch on a little bit later. It's about 55 tons of carbon off, carbon footprint offset. When in comparison to three megawatts of solar is 94 and a half thousand total pounds of carbon offset. With the tree clearing, we're looking at hand felling the trees outside of our fence line. That's to provide additional habitat for local flora and fauna. This, this goes in line with DEQ and DCR's pollinator scorecard. That's one of the requirements with this site. We anticipate to meet the 80-point requirement to make this a pollinator smart site as well. Few more details. This is a three-megawatt tracker system, which means it follows the sun's pattern from east to west, from dawn till dusk. These are polysilicone panels. They have a UL rating of 1703, and they've been through rigorous tests, meet and exceed third-party leaching tests as well. And additionally, one of the other county requirements is a one-mile radius rule. The closest project to this is Blue Ridge Solar, which is 1.18 miles away. So we've fulfilled and exceeded that requirement as well. As Claire mentioned, this is a three-phase system. It ties into a three-phase system, which means our point of interconnection is on site. We don't have to do anything extra. To date, we've done extensive due diligence on the site. Wetlands have been delineated, ran multiple reports, TNE, threatened endangered species, Phase 1 ESA as well. Currently in the process of scheduling our Phase 1B's field work for historical and architectural. We've done our preliminary cultural resources reviews as well. And again, just to kind of come full circle, we are adhering to all county requirements with this project. Dive a little bit deeper into some of the finite details of this site, the landscaping plan. It appears that we lost our legend there for the color coding. So the existing vegetation is going to be the dark green. It may be easier to see on some of the TVs. And then the proposed vegetation is going to be that lime green, and then the proposed BMPs on site is going to be that translucent blue. All BMPs on site are scheduled to be there for the entirety of the project. They will be in accordance with DEQ's recent memorandum stating that all solar panels and posts will be viewed as impervious. And we've taken that into consideration with the calculations. We've come out to about 4,000 cubic feet per acre of what's required for storage, which we have strategically placed along the site to meet all stormwater requirements. And in the areas where you see the light green, that is where it's not a full buffer width. It is the supplemental to the existing stands of trees. And then that frontage, as you see to the left of the facility itself, is the one, is the proposed 100-foot vegetative buffer. And I'll touch on that in another slide as well. We've been exploring the option of staking out the vegetative buffer areas so that we're able to get more natural growth in there sooner. This is pre-development, pre-construction, as I believe one of the board members touched on this evening as well. This will be a pre-construction Phase 1 condition to where we would stake out the areas, let it free grow, no mow, no vegetation, no agitation. This also helps promote local flora and fauna as well within the area. We also prescribe an earned seed mix as well as a pollinator mix on site. Later on in the site plan phase, we get into more specifics of that details because they are prescribed site by, site by site and a case-by-case basis. Vegetation, as it stands, the minimum on site with the proposed landscape plan will be 100 feet and the maximum will be at 400-foot depth as well. And additionally, one of the most beautiful things about this property is the topography. It's situated well, rolling topography. The peak grade is going to be at the proposed vegetative buffer line. So in that light green areas, we're going to be the highest point on site. And then all of the remaining topography flows east, I'm sorry, eastwards, so to the rear site. So everything else that's developed, solar panels, the fencing, all of it slopes away from the road. And will be sitting up to 40 feet below the highest point on site as well. So a lot of those panels start to diminish, especially being at a maximum 15 feet height. So looking at that, taking a quick snapshot of that vegetative buffer on the front and where it will go. So the top. where it will go, so the top picture from site visit shows a winter fall, or I'm sorry, winter conditions of the site, so there is no leaves, no nothing, this is straight through, and that little bit of field that you see behind that first stand of trees is exactly where the landscape buffer is going, so that means behind that is where all the panels are going. We anticipate this to be one-hundred percent screened from every, every adjacent parcel as well as U.S. twenty-nine. We mentioned earlier, this has gone through a few different stages throughout its lifespan. Preliminary layout we did in Q-one of twenty-twenty-two, we were ambitious in our want and need to create a hybrid solar and agricultural characteristic on-site, we wanted to keep some land remaining for Mr. Owen and his family to continue to farm, and this was very early on, we still had a lot of outstanding site discovery items that needed to come back to as well, and then we looked back, setbacks weren't going to work for us as well with this, and we had to go back to the drawing board. So Plan Two, we moved forward, we still wanted to keep that, that hybrid approach to the site with agriculture and solar, we kind of got into the mindset that we would start to apply for variance, we had a pre-app meeting with the site layout with Ms. Ragsdale on the twenty-fifth of April of twenty-twenty-two, it was advised that it wouldn't be the easiest or most successful process to go through, and we kind of took a step back, reevaluated all the site discovery items that we had just received back, and we went back to the drawing board one more time. So before you this evening is the final proposed layout, and as I mentioned in the beginning, went back to the drawing board one-hundred percent and adhered to all county requirements and solar ordinance, so this is to, by the books to a T. Decommissioning plan, I will not drag you through all the numbers, but we have quantified and enumerated every, or every piece of the development process, we'll be removing all the above-ground equipment backfilling stormwater features, the landscaping's going to stay, stay implemented, we'll be pulling all the MV lines as well as the concrete pads and the, excuse me, construction, or access road to the site as well, panels come out as well as a chain link fence. And I will turn it back over to Claire for community outreach, thank you very much.
Here's a quick snapshot of, at the community outreach that we have conducted for this proposed site, starting back in May, I sent around a letter to all of the abutting neighbors. There was, I think probably only like seven of them, but I identified eleven parcels that might be impacted that are nearby and reached out to them as well with this letter and then followed up with a phone call. I was able to get in touch with a couple of those folks, and I'll highlight those conversations for you in just a minute. In July, I had my second letter go out, and I wanted to make sure to include all of the neighbors that would be impacted by this project, not just because they're located right next to it, but because they might be impacted by that one-mile radius in the ordinance, if somebody else maybe wanted to go solar, that would prohibit them from doing that. I wanted to give them a chance to talk with me about their concerns and address any, any concerns they might have. We did hold a virtual community meeting on the twenty-eighth to stay here from those folks, we sent out a hundred and thirty-five mailers, and we have some very extensive notes from the zero number of people that attended the meeting. I think that what that says to me is that folks got notice of this project and no one had concerns to raise with me, and nor do I believe anybody is here this evening to address it either. I did follow up with some phone calls, so those abutters one more time, just to make sure they got all the opportunity to speak with me about their concerns, and didn't catch any of them on the phone. But I will show you a little bit about the conversations I had with some of the neighbors nearby that I think are worth sharing with you. Notably, I spoke with Fred Curl of FC Holdings a couple of times, he was also trying to do some solar on his land, so we were talking about what this would mean for him if, if we got approval, and more or less, he said, hey, first come, first served. I did advise him to speak with the developer he's been working with about maybe finding a different way to proceed, and, and he was in support of us coming for, in front of you guys tonight. Spoke with Susan Parker, another abutter, she said she's been interested in exploring solar herself, but kind of the same sentiment as Mr. Curl, said that that's how it goes, that's how it goes, I, I did offer her to give me a call with any questions she had about her solar pursuit in the future. And then I spoke with Victoria, who works at Absolute Storage, and she just said she really hopes this project goes forward, she thinks it's really great for the county, and she'd be willing to sign a letter of support if we wanted to submit that to you. These are just a couple of the conversations that I've had, no one I spoke with presented any opposition or any concern, just wanted clarification about what the ordinance means to them. With that, I'll stop and let you ask any questions you might have for us, and we'd be happy to address any comments, questions, or concern from you all.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions for the applicant's board members?
I've got a quick question, the, the two-hundred-megawatt cap, is that for the entire state of Virginia?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, excuse me, this didn't use the same phrasing, but this is a community solar farm as well?
That's correct, this will be eligible for shared solar, the-
And it's also handled or sponsored by Dominion?
It's, Dominion is the utility company that would be servicing the electricity, yes. The same infrastructure, I should clarify.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, we may have a few more after we discuss a little bit. Is there anyone signed up from the public?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone from the public would like to speak? All right, on that note, we'll close the public hearing at seven-seventeen. As with, we, we have a letter from Mr. Curl, suggesting there may be a better site somewhere else. So, if you'd like to read that for your record. I'd just have to say, as, as with the site on Mill Creek Road, it's in about as good a location as it can be, it's falls away from the vision, they're working toward the areas around it to be sure they're, it's well-hidden, and it's, it's a commercial, quickly-growing commercial area there.
I agree with what you said, Mr. Chairman, it's a good location, difficult to see.
Would you all like to present a positive motion, see how it goes?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
All right. And Mr. Merks has kindly agreed to read the nineteen conditions, so I'll read the positive motion and he'll, he'll-
It's, it's fine to simply say with the conditions, it's fine to simply say with the conditions outlined by staff.
She said it's fine to say the conditions is outlined by the staff.
Ronald wanted to read them, though.
That's all right. I was just trying to be nice.
All right, that's good. With that being said, okay, whereas Dry Fork Solar One LLC is requesting a special use permit for a utility-scale solar energy facility, and whereas we find no substantial detriment to adjacent property that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, and whereas there are no significant adverse effects upon adjacent property that cannot be mitigated through conditions, I move the special use permit be granted with the following conditions as outlined by the staff. Okay. Is that something you all could accept if we receive a positive motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And Mr. Crowder made a positive motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, Ms. Deering did the second. All those in favor of a positive motion, make it known by voting. All right, thank you all, thank you for coming out, good luck to you. All right. This meeting is adjourned. How's that? I won't even-